I don't know what that said at the end, but it's funny when that heat pumps work and. Yes. Yeah. Came in the town office last week and there was a bunch of people like, you know, what is going on in here? It's like seventy six degrees. We just, people were cold, so they turned it up a little bit. No, she's here.
No, she's not.
Yep, what's the electric bill roughly?
First page.
Really?
Yep.
Probably what I'm hoping for.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, is it really? Yeah.
But.
Oh. Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Josh.
Somebody else?
I don't think you all have a hand to get it. No, she's sick. I was watching Danny film it when he did it, Danny Clarkson did it, and it was hit, and then it would go chwack right up to the wall like that.
Yeah, sitting there.
Do you recall this happening?
Even the, uh, the Coast Guard base was pushing what they were supposed to wash.
To see, uh, the travel of waves down the.
Yeah.
Oh, not right over the wall.
Oh, really?
One of them.
They just can't believe it. I mean, that's, that was a storm surge, like that was a more extreme storm.
You could just sit there and watch it too. Still there.
It was washed in the sea, and then we just had it blew it up before. It was, but Kim's, you know, Kim Stroh already raised it. Yeah, and that's been raised probably two feet at least in the river. I was watching the Jack stands. Under Mont.
Works good down there.
They still have trouble.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Yep. Yeah, I went down to see one too, that was more brave. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a Christian one they built there, because it's like, um, that one right there, it's two stacks, it's like, ivies in between.
It was completely going.
The one that was the only top part of it's peeled back.
Yeah.
And just take it apart and put it back together.
Yeah.
The other one's completely done.
You look at the edge.
But, I mean, it's that's here off. It's like some companies like where. They had some great form, they had to get it.
It was only just single stick. No, it was like, it was going up on the water line, like, when are we gonna move? Yeah, I saw it upside down, and I was like, yeah. That's only second before that was. That surge was just crazy. Who's who here? Yeah, I can tell now. Yeah. I can hear him muck it. All right. We have got five o'clock. I call the meeting to order today, Tuesday, January third, twenty twenty-three. Uh, roll call, we have Selectman Howdy Goodwin, Eric Eaton, Kevin Buck, and myself, Jamie Thurlow, Town Manager Jesse Dunbar, Town Clerk Katie Dandren. And Mackenzie, uh, has let me know that she is, will not be making it this evening.
I'll make a motion to excuse Mackenzie Jewett from tonight's meeting.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to excuse Mackenzie Jewett from tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, um, adoption of agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to change? I just have to make a change in, we have to move one of our executive sessions, um, twelve, which was titled Personnel Matters, to, we'll call it five B, so it will be right after we approve the warrants. We'll have to do it then. Do you want a motion on that, Jesse, or? No? Okay. All right. Approval of minutes. We have the minutes from December fifth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from Monday, December fifth, twenty twenty-two. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I saw one spelling error. Talk of the second page, Jordan's last name is spelled differently than first, on the first page in that page. I think it's.
Oh, yeah. Yep. All right, all set. All those in favor? All right, approval of warrants. We have warrant fifty-six for ten thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and twelve cents, fifty-seven for ten thousand five hundred forty-five dollars and forty-eight cents, fifty-eight for one hundred fifty-eight thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars and forty-three cents, fifty-nine for fourteen thousand nine hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents, warrant sixty for thirty-three thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents, sixty-one for eleven thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars sixty-four cents, sixty-two for eight hundred eighty-five dollars fifty-seven cents, sixty-three for one hundred thirty-two thousand four dollars and sixty-three cents, and warrant sixty-four for eleven thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars and forty-one cents.
I made a motion to approve the warrants fifty-six through sixty-four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants fifty-six through sixty-four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, next we have our move executive session. We have one entitled Personnel Matters.
I make a motion to find the public discussion of these personnel matters could be reasonably expected to cause damage to the employees' reputation and/or violate the employees' privacy rights, and therefore to go into executive session to discuss the employment, appointment, assignment, duties, promotion, demotion, compensation, evaluation, disciplining, resignation, and/or dismissal of individual or group of public officials, appointees, or employees as permitted by one M R S A four oh five dot six dot A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into exec- executive session titled Personnel Matters as read by Kevin. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, everyone. Sorry to make you go outside for just a minute, but. My throat, I don't know what it is, getting dry. Probably I'm coming down with that. I had it that, remember that, we. Jesse, what's that thermostat set on in there? It feels warm to me. Maybe it's just because I've been in a cold shop all day. I was gonna say, that thing cooks some meat out of it.
Yeah, it's actually cold.
Oh, did they really? Yep. Yeah. Well, that's, at least you have it if you need. I don't think you're gonna need it though, but the feel of it. Yep.
Just go back for touring.
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to very reluctantly accept the Harbor Master's resignation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to very reluctantly, uh, accept the Harbor Master, Justin Seavey's resignation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? I know. What happens if you don't accept it?
You can't leave.
Yeah, you can't leave. Okay.
Thank you very much, Justin.
Yeah, well, thanks, Justin. Thanks, Justin.
I motion to transfer the Harbor Master's remaining balance of six, sick leave equally to the full-time town employees.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to equally transfer, uh, sick leave from Harbor Master Justin Seavey's position to, um, all of the, all town employees. All full-time town employees. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, once again, Justin, thank you for all you've done. You've done such a great job.
Much appreciated. All right. See you guys. Thank you.
All right. Next we have, uh, K D appointments. We have Acadia National Parks Advisory Commission. We have received three new applicants. One is Heidi Welch, Mike Hayes, Sarah White, and also Carolyn Gothard that currently serves the position, um, would like reappointment as well.
Yes, and just one update, um, I did receive an email today from Heidi Welch that she, um, misunderstood and thought that Cali did not want to do it anymore.
Okay.
But now that she knows she does, she wishes to be withdrawn from her consideration.
So Heidi Welch wants to be withdrawn, so we'll just, Mike Hayes, um, and Sarah White, and Carolyn Gothard.
Yep.
Is there anybody here who would like to speak on behalf of that spot, or, yes?
I'm Sarah White.
Yeah.
And, um, from West Tremont, and ever since I can remember, um, I grew up as an army brat, and every single summer we would go to a national park, and those were the best memories of growing up, and it committed me to a career as a national park ranger, which I was fortunate, I heard me get a record parks management and natural resources in college, to land a position in Acadia as my first national park. So I was only there one season, but I was committed. That's why I'm back here retiring, and I'm just really committed to the park. I'm also really aware, because I did go from that park to the Falmouth Monument to Ligon Boyhood, Indiana, of what it means, what the park deals with, and this park is probably the most unique because of all the intricate, complicated relationships, because of the private landowners where it's located. Not only that, the nonprofits that are involved with it. Now we're just more aware of the Wabnaki tribe's involvement, the need to make the park available to, um, people who have, I don't know, challenges walking, that kind of thing. So, um, accessibility issues, so. I am also fortunate, I'll be, sorry, I'll be too long, but real quick.
Sorry.
Fortunate to be, um, partially sort of oddly comprehensive and task force, and I've already been to a meeting, so I've already just, I brought my shillotell here. But I've already done my work in the Tremont, um, area of where Acadia is connected in Tremont, where our parks trail, the national park trails are. Of course, there's the lighthouse, and I've been in contact with John Kelly about getting the data about transportation effects on Tremont, about how the park affects Tremont specifically. So. I'd love to be on commission to do whatever I can in that regard.
Okay, thank you very much, and thanks for your hard work already. Anybody else? Okay. Who do you guys think?
I know Mike Hayes has reached out to me and said he'd really like to be involved, so.
I know.
I like what Sarah has to offer.
Yep.
She's got a lot of experience with the parks, and I think that's very important to the community. Um, Carolyn, I don't know her. I, I don't know what, uh, her, her past is with the park, so I can't really say whether I favor her or not, but she's in the position now, so obviously she's been doing something right. So I really don't have a preference, I guess.
I know, I think, seems like Sarah's put a lot of time and effort into this, and, and, uh, I think that's, that seems to be a, you know, a good, good effort to make. I like that.
I'll make a motion to nominate, uh, Sarah White to the seat on the Acadia National Park Advisory Commission expiring April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to nominate Sarah White to the seat on the Acadia National Park Advisory Commission, term expiring April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you. All right, next we have financial reports.
So these reports are as of November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, um, they're carryover from the meeting in the summer that was, um, skipped. So they are forty-two percent of the way through the fiscal year, um, under revenues, in November, we collected seventy-two thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars in property taxes. Total collections are at ninety-three point five six percent of budget, um, which remains ahead of pace from April twenty-two, and we continue to outpace all other recent years. We also collected thirty-three thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars in motor vehicle excise tax, resulting in total collections of forty-seven point five two percent of what was budgeted, again, ahead of pace from this point last year, and ahead of our own pace with all other recent years. Uh, under expenses, the administration cost center is currently at forty-one point seven six percent of the budgeted amount. Some notable, notable expenses in November included six hundred and eighty-five dollars in office supplies, thirty-four hundred and fifteen for new tax maps, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars in attorney's fees, nine hundred and forty-seven in computer replacement for a new laptop, and nine hundred and fifty for the software that owns the mobile message son. Um, you'll also see the second payment of sixty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-five for the fire department's annual appropriation, as well as the twenty-one thousand two hundred seventy-five annual appropriation for Harbor House. In public works, we're currently running at twenty-four point oh nine percent of budget. Some notable expenses in November include a thousand fifty-eight in building repairs for the annual door maintenance and hoist inspection, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars in heating fuel, thirteen hundred and fifty dollars for repairs to Carter Road, twenty-two hundred and ninety-four dollars for engineering costs on Dix Point Road, a thousand fifty for repairs to Turner Road, forty-one hundred and eighteen dollars for pile and sander parts, and twenty-seven hundred and sixty-six dollars for road salt. Uh, we also had ninety-seven hundred and twenty-one dollars in repairs, uh, outside repairs that included annual repairs to trucks one and two, a sander repair on truck three, and an electrical switch being added to the box. In the general ledger, we received twelve thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars in revenue sharing from the state in November, bringing our total to seventy thousand seven hundred ninety-two, which is fifty-three percent of what I budgeted for April twenty-three. We also see a reduction of forty-four hundred dollars in the town office reserve for the cost of the heat pumps. Otherwise, there's no significant changes for general reserve accounts in November.
Which, as we can tell, those heat pumps are working very well. Never been warmer, never.
I make a motion to accept the July two thousand twenty-two through November two thousand twenty-two financial reports.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the July twenty twenty-two through November twenty twenty-two financial reports. Discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have regular business. Um, we'll start off with our FY twenty-four budget prep for nonprofit organizations. And they'll start out first thing with, um, Southwest Harbor Tremont Ambulance Service.
Hi, I'm Andy Klein, uh, and I'm here with my colleagues Colleen Maynard, our treasurer, and Dave Ashworth, our vice president, on behalf of the ambulance service. We're extremely grateful for the town's past support and appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. We recognize that our request for this next fiscal year represents a big increase, and we thought that it was important to share with you some information and answering questions that you might have. Uh, one thing I'd like to stress right off the bat is that we're not asking for any money to pay for the new ambulance. We're handling that responsibility, uh, on our own. So what we're hoping for is support for general operations. As you know, we didn't ask for an increase last year or the current, during this current year, even though costs are rising and we had a pretty projected budget deficit. But looking ahead, uh, we want to give our, we are giving our employees an eight point seven percent coal raise, and, um, inflation, who knows what it will be in this coming year, but probably eleven percent or thereabouts. And even costs that we might expect to be fairly level, like insurance, are going up twenty-five hundred dollars in the past year. In addition, there's a new main law that requires us to give our employees an hour of earned time off for every forty hours they work. And, uh, since all of our employees, except one, our director who's salaried, um, uh, are per diem, they can take time off whenever they want to, uh, so the only way we can comply with that law is to pay them their hourly rate at the end of the year for as many earned time off hours as they've accumulated. So it's an extra expense. And there's another new law coming down the pike that will have us, uh, we don't know all the details yet, but a new state law that will have us contributing to a retirement plan for our, our folks. With, uh, five hundred and thirty-one runs in calendar of two thousand twenty-two, our number of runs is up more than twenty percent over last year. And easily a third or more of those are things which don't produce any income for us. The only time that insurance will pay, Medicare or other insurances will pay, is if we transport somebody to the hospital. And a lot of our calls are lift assists or wellness checks, where somebody is in crisis. We show up, but they don't need to go or don't want to go to the hospital. An, an ambulance run to the hospital nets us about somewhere, it depends on services, but somewhere around up seven hundred and fifty dollars. Some agencies I know for, in other communities or other states, might bill a person a hundred or a hundred and fifty dollars for ambulance and personnel time to come to the house and assist without any transportation. We've chosen not to do that. Uh, we don't think that the folks in our community, uh, would be well-served by char- trying to charge them and, you know, go to the trouble of billing and collecting and so on. We, most of all, don't want to create any sort of disincentive for them to call us. We want them to call and not say, oh, jeez, I'm worried about getting a hundred dollar bill, so I won't call nine one one. That would be, in our view, the worst-case scenario. So in some sense, we're hoping that the town of Tremont and the town of Southwest Harbor will sort of underwrite this, what we feel is an important service to the community, to respond to these calls that don't net us any income. And, uh, the last thing, uh, to emphasize is that, uh, we feel like we've made a pretty strong effort to do fundraising, um, and balance our books. In a, in addition to, uh, I mentioned to you the last time I, I spoke to you that we had signed on for a new billing service, and that's worked out well for us. We're collecting much more of the money owed to us than we were previously. And in addition to that, um, we've applied for two grants and actually just submitted a request for a third. Uh, one is a FEMA grant that we received that's gonna, uh, help us buy a power lift system for the, uh, current number one ambulance that'll become number two, and the new ambulance will be equipped with it also. And the other was a liner grant from the folks, uh, who are very generous here locally, and they've given us a contribution toward the new ambulance. We've also, uh, really worked hard on our fundraising with, uh, cultivating two major donors and, uh, reached out to citizens and summer folks to, who have responded generously to our annual appeal. So we're working hard on that. Well, we've, one other little detail, we've added a donation option, uh, on our webpage, so people are visiting there, they can click on something and donate. I know that a couple of the things that are often, uh, important to you and the rest of the folks in town are, are coverage rates, you know, how many shifts do we have covered, and also response times. The average for the past year, um, on response time, within six and a half minutes, we're en route on average, and within thirteen minutes and forty-five seconds, we're on site. That's average. Some are longer, some are shorter. And, uh, we're between ninety-six and ninety-seven percent of our shifts are covered for calendar two thousand twenty-two. That's good, but not great. We would like to have a hundred percent coverage for our shifts. And one of the things that we're doing to try and address that is we're, uh, in, we're, um, working on the possibility of hiring a full-time E M T, which would fill thirty-six hours of shift every week. And we believe that that combination, along with our director who takes thirty-six and thirty hours every other week, and our per diem folks, will help us come closer to a hundred percent coverage, and we're, we're always striving for that.
That, uh, when I read this earlier, sorry to interrupt.
No, please.
When I read this earlier, yeah, I saw you had, currently have one full-time employee?
Yeah, our only.
You're trying to get another one?
Full-time salaried employee is our director, Andrew Brayley.
Right.
Uh, we're, uh, currently advertising for a full-time position.
Okay.
We haven't hired anybody yet, but we're, we're, it's been posted internally to give our current crew members an opportunity to apply, and then we're gonna post it publicly next week.
If you get another full-time employee, is there gonna be one guy night shift, one guy day shift, or how is that? You probably don't have that ironed out yet, but.
Yeah, um, well, the new person would, would take thirty-six hours of shift every week, and that could be three twelves.
Right, however it works.
Yeah, and it'll be up to the director to make that work, because we have a lot of people who, maybe they have other jobs with Bangor Fire or, or something, they go, one of our E M Ts is a teacher in the public school system, and so it, we rely on our director to get everybody's availability and then fill the shift as, as well as we can. We try to give some preference to the people who have seniority. We've got a couple of guys that have been with us for twenty years or more. We've got a couple of guys that have been with us for twenty years or more, and we don't want them to be, we don't want to put some new person in the shifts that they want, if we can help it. So it's a bit of a juggling act, to answer your question.
Yeah, absolutely, I get it.
But we think it'll help us get closer to a hundred percent coverage.
Yes.
Yeah. Do you guys like to add anything? We're absolutely open for questions.
You've been pretty successful recruiting people. If I remember, you having a really hard time a year or two ago.
Yeah, it's been better, it's been better. One of the things we did was, and I might have mentioned this to you, we offered out an opportunity for a young person in the paramedic course that, which costs about a thousand dollars. And we knew of two young people, actually both, I think, residents of Tremont, who had enrolled in that class, and we reached out to them and said, if you come to work for us for six months, we'll pay for that training that you got. And one of those young people is with us, and one decided not to continue with that. So, you know, we're trying a variety of things. And in all honesty, on the board, we don't deal much with hiring, but Andrew is continually looking for more people. But, yeah, thanks, Andrew.
Nothing else? Good, thank you.
Any other questions we can answer? So, thanks very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I understand the increase.
No.
It's a very important service. I don't see an issue at all with that increase.
I'm good with it.
I make a motion to request the town manager includes sixty-four thousand dollars for the, I'm sure I get the name right, Southwest Harbor Tremont Ambulance Service in the proposed fiscal year twenty-four budget.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to request the town manager to include the Southwest Harbor Tremont Ambulance Service in the amount of sixty-four thousand dollars in the proposed FY twenty-four budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, next we have Harbor House Community Center. Ingrid here.
I'm Ingrid Katsmer, I'm the executive director, and I don't have a very long report beyond what, you know, we submitted. I think most of you all know what we do, and we've done it for a long time. We have the youth center, which is for you, children in Southwest Harbor and Tremont, and those are kids that are in grades three through eight. And we're open every day at school, some school vacations, professional development days and things like that. And then part of the appropriation also goes to the sports and recs offerings that we do for kids kindergarten through fifth grade. So the amount that we're asking for is the same as it's been for the last, I'll say, five years-ish. And, um, any questions?
No.
Thank you.
I think we're pretty familiar with it.
Yeah. And if there's no increase, then we're happy with that, definitely.
The other thing I would mention, too, is during this power outage, we opened the buildings up and kept them unlocked for people who didn't have power. They needed to charge the phones, use the bathroom facilities, put something in the microwave. And just so you all know, you know, I know you've got your community gym space, but if the town finds itself in this kind of situation again, right, our buildings are always open for whatever help they can provide the community with.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to request that the town manager includes twenty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars for Harbor House in the proposed fiscal year twenty-four.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to request that the town manager include twenty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars for Harbor House in the proposed twenty twenty-four budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Thanks. All right, next we have, is it Down East Island Explorer?
Yep, Down East Transportation.
Yeah, Down East Transportation as well.
And I received an email from Paul today that he could not make it tonight.
Okay.
He's happy to answer any questions, same request as last several years.
Three thousand dollars, and their request last year was three thousand dollars. And did he mention if they were going to be full on roads again, like full, were they just passed or?
Yeah.
Was it full this quarter?
I thought it was.
I know we have trouble with drivers.
Is it called Down East Transportation, was that what you said?
Yeah, Down East Transportation.
A motion to request that the town manager includes three thousand dollars for Down East Transportation in the proposed FY twenty-four budget.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to request the town manager to include three thousand dollars for Down East Transportation in the proposed FY twenty-four budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have Down East Horizons.
They did not submit one.
Oh. They did, I'll tell you. Okay, so next will be the MDI Campfire Coalition.
Name again?
Yeah.
So, heating assistance, yeah, it's a heating assistance program that is overseen by Harbor House and the neighborhood house. We offer heating assistance to everybody on MDI and the outer islands. And last year, we served, I think, twenty-seven, sorry, sixteen families in Tremont, totaling a total of four thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. We've seen an uptick this year for all the reasons that we can understand, you know, the cost. And we've actually increased the amount of assistance that we're giving this year, instead of a hundred gallons or the equivalent, we're doing a hundred and twenty-five this year. And so we're just requesting the same amount that we have had for a long time, which is three thousand for each of the four communities.
Thank you.
I motion to request that the town manager includes three thousand dollars for the MDI Campfire Coalition in the proposed FY twenty-four budget.
Second. Moved and seconded to request the town manager include three thousand dollars for the MDI Community Campfire Coalition in the proposed FY twenty-four budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Next, we have Down East Community Partners.
And I spoke to her today, she could make it tonight.
Okay.
And they requested the same.
Yep, last year, their request was twenty-five hundred dollars, and they're requesting the same this year.
I motion to request that the town manager includes twenty-five hundred dollars for the Down East Community Partners in the proposed FY twenty-four budget.
Second. Moved and seconded to request that the town manager include twenty-five hundred dollars for the Down East Community Partners in the proposed FY twenty-four budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next is the Tremont Historical Society. Has already handed out these flashy new calendars here. Anything you would like to add?
I would just like to add, I would like to add this, I think that you guys are always interested in knowing that while we do ask for a grant from the town to help us with our budget, we also do an annual appeal. And as treasurer, I'm very happy to tell you that each year in the last two or three, the annual appeal has increased not astronomically, but noticeably in the amount that we're able to raise from the same about two hundred and thirty-five or forty people on our mailing list. We call them members, because anybody who donates becomes a member. But that shows that the information that we are sharing with them when we send out our appeal is receiving some kind of a positive response, because otherwise they wouldn't bother. With so many appeals that everybody gets in the mail every day, especially the last round of it every year. So I'm pleased to say that we're doing, we think that we're doing our part as well as we can, and we're a very small and a very totally volunteer organization.
Thank you, thank you for all that you do. And, oh, sorry, the amount they're requesting is thirty-five hundred dollars, which is the same as last year.
I make a motion to request that the town manager includes thirty-five hundred dollars for the Tremont Historical Society in the proposed fiscal year twenty-four budget.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to request the town manager include thirty-five hundred dollars for the Tremont Historical Society in the proposed FY twenty-four budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have the Hospice Volunteers of Hancock County.
My name's Catherine Thompson, and first of all, I live on Dixie Point Road, and thank you, thank you.
Yeah. You like your own?
Oh, I love it.
They seem to be doing a very good job with all the construction.
Oh, gosh, and they were so, so good about letting us, because we had to go in and out.
That's good.
It was really, it was pleasant, actually.
Yeah.
Hospice volunteers, we have about twenty-five volunteers on the island. We haven't had much during the pandemic to do, but as it gets back into more normalcy, I'm sure that we will have it. Before the pandemic, we were serving as many as twenty a month. And our job is not the medical hospice. We are there to give respite, to read to somebody, to do errands. We also have a singing group that can be called at the last minute to come in and sing for a patient. It isn't an end of life so much as, I mean, we've had patients for years. So it isn't the professional hospice who gives you a six-month life expectancy. We can, we can do anybody at any time. And it's based in Ellsworth on Mackenzie Avenue. We have an executive, a brand-new executive director, a patient care, and we also have a grievance counselor, so that people that have suffered death can come and meet me groups and discuss their sorrow and their problems and meet new people. I don't know, any other questions? I'm doing this, so.
Thank you. Anyone, yes?
Just as a little testimony, I, my wife died about six and a half years ago, and the singing group came and sang to her during her last days. And sometime later, I was a member of a grief counseling group that was very beneficial to me. So just one person who's very grateful for that organization.
Yes.
I'd like to add my thanks, too. I lost my mind this winter, and hospice is, was a lot of help. You know, the last, they said, you know, last month, last week, last days, this is what you can expect. And, you know, my sisters and I, they, they really held our hand and helped guide us through the process. I'm very, very grateful to them. They made a painful, painful situation much easier for us, so I'm grateful to the hospice.
Thank you. So good to hear positive things like that. It's great.
I'll make a motion to request the town manager to include one thousand dollars for the Hospice Volunteers of Hancock County.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to request that the town manager include one thousand dollars for hospice volunteers at Hancock County in the proposed FY twenty-four budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
All right, next we have Island Connections. I believe that's, look at my list as well here. Yes, Island Connections.
Hi, I'm Sharon Lynn Scott, and I'm the executive director of Island Connections. Just a few things I want to add is now that we've included twenty twenty-two, we looked at our numbers, and twenty twenty-two was an absolute record number year for Island Connections. We provided the most number of rides we've ever provided. Over last year, it was eight hundred more rides, it was a total of fifty-six hundred rides, and that's for all the residents of MDI. In twenty twenty-one, it was about forty-eight hundred. If we go back to twenty nineteen, it was just about five thousand, but that was also when we were expanding our services beyond medical appointments and food insecurity. We were doing exercise classes and bed appointments and social events. So that the need for our services, our pre-transportation services, has increased so greatly. So a lot of what we're having to do is we're going to have to enhance some volunteer recruitment efforts to make sure that we can meet the demand for our services. And for the residents of Tremont, we have some residents that do transport to medical appointments, but we also are the wheels for meals on wheels, and we have a Tremont Route, as well as the Food Access Project, which is a program under the table, MDI. We provide the drivers for that on Saturdays, and there's a Tremont Route. So we are happy to provide the services that we do to all of MDI, especially Tremont. Our services allow people to live in their homes longer than they normally would and help increase their quality of life, provide some socialization. A lot of folks tend to get isolated. We serve seniors over seventy and people with disabilities, so mostly a lot of our seniors become very isolated. And so that social interaction with our volunteers is actually critical to their, to their life. So we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
I motion to request the town manager to include fifteen hundred dollars in the proposed FY twenty-four budget for Island Connections.
Second. It's been moved into, excuse me, moved and seconded to request that the town manager includes fifteen hundred dollars for Island Connections in the proposed FY twenty-four budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, next we have the Bar Harbor Food Pantry.
Hi, I'm Tom, the executive director of the pantry. Same refrain, record year, record number of households, record number of visits. Tremont accounts for about four and a half percent. We, people come to the pantry, we also deliver here. We have a great number of volunteers who bring here, and when they can't, I do. Our food costs this year, I think, are going to come out to be about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And next year, I'm anticipating a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty, depending on what happens with wheat. Yeah, and so you, I will say, your town is the only town that gets to close to fifty percent of food costs for your town. So I do appreciate it, asking for twenty-five hundred, which is the same as last year. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
I motion to request that the town manager includes twenty-five hundred dollars for the Bar Harbor Food Pantry in the proposed FY twenty-four budget.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to request the town manager to include twenty-five hundred dollars for Bar Harbor Food Pantry in the proposed FY twenty-four budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
We'll send some more people your way this year.
All right, next we have the Island Housing Trust.
Natalie Osborne, Programs Manager. I just wanted to say we appreciate your support. In previous years, our requests have not increased, and we look forward to you guys supporting year-round housing in the upcoming year. If you have any questions on your answer.
Thank you.
Jesse, it says here two dollars and fifty cents.
That is not bull crap. That was also in the last year. Go take it.
He's the town manager, he's trying to save everything. He's the town manager. He's trying to save everything.
I make a motion to request the town manager to include twenty-five hundred dollars for the Island Housing Trust in the proposed fiscal year twenty-four budget.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to request the town manager to include twenty-five hundred dollars for Island Housing Trust in the proposed FY twenty-four budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, next, we have the West Side Food Pantry.
Thank you, happy to have patients from the front of you. Just a couple of highlights, same as questions last year. We served seventy-eight Tremont household, a hundred and four adults, thirty-four kids. Of the total budget, Tremont receives about thirty-eight percent for each month last year, and we ran an extended season for much. We distributed seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars in vouchers. As you know, unlike the Bar Harbor Food Pantry that has the physical goods, we give vouchers to local stores, and that's obviously the food market, but it's also a gift store and Hanson's outpost right next door here. And that is, came to over sixty-one thousand dollars that Tremont residents received in the last eight months. And the West Side Food Pantry also contributes to the backpack program here at the school. And for needy children, as identified by the guidance counselor and the school nurse, we provide nourishing meals. They're distributed on Thursdays, and the kids have little bags. It's all done very discreetly. They can take home. It has healthy snacks and things like that. And there are roughly twenty-three kids between the two schools, Southwest Harbor and us. It's a joint project between Harbor House and the West Side Food Pantry. So everyone knows how bad inflation is and everything like that, and I gave her access for the same amount as we had last year. We may choose to increase the amount of vouchers. We've done that in the last couple of years. The amount given out each Sunday, the first and third Sundays at St. John's Episcopal Church or wherever distributions. And we're, the board of directors, if you will, is the best for me of St. John's Church, which I'm a member. And I wouldn't be surprised if we end up with food costs getting higher if we increase the amount of vouchers this year. So again, your support, the twenty-five hundred dollars we're asking for, that covers about one-third of what we give to Tremont residents every month. So thank you for your support.
Thank you.
I motion to request that the town manager includes twenty-five hundred dollars to West Side Food Pantry in the proposed FY twenty-four budget.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to request the town manager to include twenty-five hundred dollars for West Side Food Pantry in the proposed FY twenty-four budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. All right, next, we have Open Table MDI.
I can speak to this, speak to this because I volunteered there. During the pandemic, they, they provided over three hundred meals a week, free meals, and they were distributed. But now they have opened up a large facility on Cotty Street, which has community dining. But again, every Tuesday, anybody could come and have a meal. And they said, they, I think they said they served forty-four thousand free meals this year. Is anybody on yet?
Yes. Thank you. Their request, last year was twenty-five hundred dollars, and this year's three thousand dollars. So just to.
Yeah, and their request, just to remind you, their request was three thousand last year. It was their first year of funding, and the board decided to award them the same amount as the other two food pantries. Twenty-five hundred for last year. So they've submitted their request the same as what they requested.
Yeah, I think it's good to keep them all the same. I don't know about you guys. They do a lot, though.
I know.
They all do a lot. It's incredible service from everybody.
We're pretty fortunate that we have this many people that are volunteering and doing as they do, and, and, uh, it's, I mean, that's a lot of meals. That's, it's a lot of, everybody has their, yeah. I personally don't.
I find three thousand.
Yeah, anything. That's just me.
Well, I don't want to go there and do dishes, so.
In that case, Eric, I'll, I'll make a motion that we request the town manager include three thousand dollars for the Open Table MDI proposed fiscal year twenty-four budget.
Second.
We don't want to wash them dishes.
No.
It's not a bad dish room, though. It's pretty nice.
Is it? Yeah. I've heard that before. It's been moved and seconded to request the town manager to include three thousand dollars for Open Table MDI in the proposed FY twenty-four budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? I think that's our whole list of, of nonprofits. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for all that everybody does. All right. Next, we have Regional Animal Control. Jesse, would you want to start off with that, have that scheme about?
Yes, so the Hancock County commissioners have been talking for a couple of months now at the request of several towns in Hancock County, I believe it was Lomond and Hancock and Franklin were some of the earliest to submit their request to the county on whether or not the county would provide an animal control, regional animal control position. I requested it just be kept in the loop since we're the only town on the island that doesn't have police force that handles that. We contract with Heath as our animal control officer. The other towns utilize their police departments. Hancock County does not offer that service as part of the shared contract for us. So they've kept me in the loop with any other towns. The commissioners were in agreement with creating such a position and have drafted a job description and are ready to advertise that position. And they have provided draft contracts for any town that wants to consider joining the regional animal control contract. So there is a draft of that in your packets. Essentially, they are charging a flat rate of twenty-five hundred dollars a year, plus twenty-five dollars per hour if the animal control officer is serving the town, sixty-two and a half cents per mile for travel, and a three percent service fee on what our monthly invoice is. For your reference in my memo, the animal control budget that we have right now is a salary position that's nine thousand, two hundred and nine dollars for the FY twenty-three budget. I don't anticipate if we were to switch to the county, I don't anticipate going over the ninety-two oh nine that they currently pay. I would expect it would probably be less, but in all considerations, with the budget, ninety-two oh nine isn't a draft to come out either, so it's not some like saving goal if you choose to do that. I did have a meeting with our current ACO, though, and he pointed out some things to consider, that we might want to clarify with the county if we, if you wanted to move forward with it. A lot of his work involves phone calls, ten minutes or less, and his, again, his position is salaried. What would the county be charging the town for a ten-minute phone call? Is it, is there an animal or a cub no any time? So we would want to know that if there is a desire to move forward with it. We also have to provide, we have to contract with a shelter for the ACO to drop off an animal. We do have a contract right now with the Small Animal Clinic for veterinary services.
I personally would like to see the physician stay local with someone who is a resident. So much easier to give a phone call when you need something like that. I guess my only question for you is, would, do you see yourself doing this for the next five years?
Yeah, I can see that.
Okay. Yep.
One of my biggest issues is someplace that someone can take an animal, we can set them upstairs with the girls or the.
Yeah.
You know, somewhere safe for everyone. So if it's not a friendly dog, it's, or keep it, someone can drop it off. If I can't get there, put it on the side of the road and save. And rather than taking it to Ellsworth and you and them to go drive off down to pick up the pet when they're in town driving and looking for it. But as far as being a vet, you know, I use family and other resources now when I'm not available. I see that a lot of the dogs don't be like names. But it's not just dogs. It's other calls.
Yeah, I know.
Sometimes it's a safety check. Family can't get a hold of me, get a check on my dog.
Yep.
And I'm actually checking on the version that also, so it's a mixed bag of.
Yeah.
You do want to keep that one point you were wondering a few years ago, but you do want.
There is times when I'd rather not give the call to them. Or in the year camp, that one, yeah.
Yep.
But it's at the end of the year. Before, I was getting paid a lot less, and it wasn't just less than all the now. It's the city government, pay your health insurance, whatever.
Yep.
So, yeah, it's your decision where the town was able to.
Now, what could we do? Just trying to think of a spot we could do. I'm sure there's code involved in all the, but could you build something on town property just to house an animal? Or, I know this might be a can of worms, but I'm just thinking of, you know, what, what exactly do we need? How fussy do we need to be?
As, as he alluded to, we had one dropped off this morning that spent the morning with us upstairs. That was a friendly dog.
So Jesse's office. When you say that, yeah, that's good. Okay. Yeah, yeah.
So, yes, if there was, I don't know, maybe you could add a repurpose the ice skating track.
I know, how fussy.
I mean, for a couple hundred thousand of those, we could put it on the.
Yeah, that's true.
Right, it's just sometimes if someone's at work, and I know they'll probably be home at five and call. I got home, my dog's gone, and if I take him up to Ellsworth, and that's me driving and them driving, you know, the dog ends up staying there overnight, and that's pretty upsetting for them.
Yeah.
It's just somewhere to keep him out of the road until someone comes to claim him.
I know. It'd be nice to put a brainstorm of an idea just to keep it out here, even if it's, I don't know what you'd do for Heath. You know, necessarily, probably just.
I bought them at our house, and then I bought them in my garage, in my shop, you know, and places are right around. I'm like, hat day in my shop. So someone calls for it, and I'm like, yeah, why didn't you call someone?
Yeah.
Yeah, or even the, the place in, in Town Hill, if they're open twenty-four hours a day. But my biggest thing is if I drop them off like in Ellsworth, and they don't open till the next morning, and people are really upset that they can't get their dog until next morning.
Yep.
The shelter charges them to pick it up. As they put fire, I'm just, yeah, donations.
Yeah.
It's crazy. Your weapon, I don't want to take it anywhere.
No, that's, I mean, if that's it, then, you know, I'm sure we can brainstorm of an idea either to repurpose a shed or something out here to have, or, or wherever. You know, or like you said, they can't all live there. If they're open that much, they're going to be open, you know? More of that be good as well. Yep.
Well, another thing, if it's local, if it's happened, that I find a dog that's stray, and you end up finding out that the owner's in distress, and then I can track them down and find out and get all that in town, and no one checks on it.
Yeah.
Little lady that fell down in her backpack and.
No, it's. Yep. I think there's a hundred reasons why I can think of why you would want to keep the position in town versus.
Yeah, I could see if we were having trouble with it, but.
Well, it's a good chance that if Heath doesn't want to do it anymore, you know, this is your chance to say, okay, this is someone who actually might want to do it. If you can see yourself doing it for a while, then that's great.
Yeah, I just would keep it local to him. I mean, as long as you're happy doing it.
Yep.
Well, thanks for signing on for another five years.
Yeah. There was a contract, just so you know. And then, do you need a motion or anything, or just?
Okay.
I was going to say, just brainstorm with, with Heath on some ideas of what we could do.
Yeah.
It'd be nice if it would stay on the property. It'd be nice if we could, you know, keep it right here, but I suppose Town Hill's not that bad. Just thinking of.
Yeah, I mean, within a two-hour window, they finally call, realize it's Ann Singer, decide that they're coming to go.
Yep.
The long ride to Ellsworth.
Yep.
Especially in August, early afternoon in August.
I mean, it'd be easy most of the year, but sometimes you'd have to have a heating, that's all.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking of how you would, yeah.
There is a building that's barking range would be quite so bad over there, right?
Yeah. All right. Thank you for doing that. And next, we've got the Surf Boss Property Sale. That lovely steam, culvert steamer trailer that's over there.
So you authorized putting up for a Surf Boss carpet sale at your November fourteenth meeting. We received two bids back, which are in your, the summaries in your packet. One from Keith Higgins for four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and one from Leonard Tinker for five hundred dollars.
Keith wanted it. The culvert steamer.
It's just a little too cheap, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, yeah, I gotta go with the highest bidder, I'm sorry.
He really had plans of that. He was going to rig it up for Heath to be the, the new dog kennel, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I motion to award the bid for the steamer trailer to Leonard Tinker in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to award the bid for the steamer trailer in the amount of five hundred dollars to Leonard Tinker. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Next, we have town managers report.
All right. So in the past three weeks, I conducted the quarterly safety committee meeting. I attended school sign training in Ellsworth with the DOT for those functional signs that we were awarded.
This training for that?
Yeah. I was pretty insistent they could do it on Zoom, and they said no, but they could have. But I did pick up the parts in the parking lot, so we do have all the parts. I'm down in public works, but. I had a Zoom meeting with FEMA as an update from the Direct Technical Assistance Grant meeting, where they came out in person and met with us. I attended a meeting with the Climate to Thrive, just to update everybody on grants received and work on grants. I had attended a meeting with the state, state representatives on the Community Resilience Partnership Grant, which provided them with updates on the first round from the spring of twenty-twenty-two. Worked on the financial reports, meeting prep. Advised the chair of the Library Board of Trustees on some budget preparation. Uh, advised the chair of the library, um, board of trustees on some budget, uh, preparations they're working on. Had a meeting with the ambulance service and conda, um, prepared the Harbor Committee financials. And I had a meeting last week with Elaine Eaton on organizing a, um, Excel spreadsheet to keep up to date with all the grants that different committees and boards are receiving and applying for so that the other committees can reference them, see what projects are getting funding and...
Good idea.
Where they can cross-reference or include something they have, um, in one of the proposals that the other board or committee is working on. Uh, and I did FY twenty-four budget work. The office staff, um, prepared the FY twenty-one foreclosures. Everybody is up to date or in a payment arrangement, so there's nothing to report, um, to foreclose on. Prepared the BNB reports, closed up the November elections, and were busy selling park passes for the month of December. Public Works, um, did a lot of tree cleanup over multiple storms. Had the XLS plow, um, worked, um, worked on at Bangor Truck. Talked to the DOT about Shore Road ditching and started ditching on Shore Road. Greased and cleaned the case, uh, in truck three, helped Justin with floats. Lots of road checking, treating roads for a couple of storms, um, washing equipment, garbage pickup, repairs on the truck nine sander, repairs on the truck three plow. Uh, hauling Silco floats with Justin. Swept the garage and town office parking lots with the broom and the bobcat. More tree removal and, um, road repair on Cape Road. Harbor Master hauled out Silco floats, checked roads, dock cleanup, uh, put a new remote on hoist one, welded a repair on the John Deere bucket, uh, inspected floats that came, um, loose off an island in the harbor. Towed a boat that had dragged its mooring. Sanded roads, um, cleaned seaweed off the dock during the, um, storm when the high tide crashed the seaweed onto the dock at the parking lot. Uh, moved a lobster car, uh, in the harbor. Prepared for the Harbor Committee meeting and attended the Harbor Committee meeting. Met with, um, Larry Albi about cough plan work regarding the harbor. Checked the fishway and put another mooring back into position. And over the next few weeks, I'll be working on the FY twenty-four budget and the Harbor Master transition license.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. All right, uh, date of the next meeting?
Make a motion to set the next meeting, um, Tuesday, January seventeenth at five o'clock right here.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting for Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, five P M at the town office. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, and next we have an executive session, Town Manager Annual Evaluation.
I make a motion to find that the public discussion of these personnel matters could be reasonably expected to cause damage to employees' reputation and/or violate the employees' privacy rights. And therefore to go in executive session to discuss the employment, appointment, yeah, I know. Duties, promotion, demotion, compensation, evaluation, disciplining, resignation, and or dismissal of an individual, a group of public officials, appointees, or employees as permitted by one MRSA four oh five dot six dot A.
He didn't throw it.
Second.
Barely.
I know, I need a drink of water. It's been moved and seconded to go in the executive session, uh, entitled Town Manager Annual Evaluation. That's right by Kevin. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? I wonder if that air is dry in here or something, 'cause I've been the whole time I've been in here. My air, did you see my doc on the first page of that shows what it used to look like?
Yeah.
I've got one even prior to that, too. All right, we are out of executive session at seven oh four, just turned. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yeah, that used to, used to be even more narrow when this, this is a new addition right here. But they used to, uh, dry fish and salt fish, and there we go. Here we go.